Conversation went, so.
That's great. I really appreciate the opportunity for you to, for me to meet with you all today. It's it's a wonderful opportunity to help get information out. We all want, we all want the real deal and to be able to have this kind of a, a session really helps, I think, a lot of people. I went in and was watching some of your previous interviews with candidates. And Charlie, you learn so much. You get a very different flavor of the person. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, good, good. I appreciate that. Well, yeah, just get us, get us started then. Tell us a little bit about uh, your, what have, would have been the highs and lows of, of your last term? And what, what business is left unfinished that you, you hope to see through in another term?
Sure. Thank you. Um, I, I think one of the, one of the big things of this past term, four years, takes us back to pandemic time. And you know, for kids, for, for us as adults, we all have our own levels of resiliency to what the pandemic brought to us. But I think for kids, it's a very different challenge that they were faced with. And they uh, were thrown into quite a turbulent situation to be able to continue their learning. And we saw attendance fall off after the pandemic, after we came out of the pandemic. And we saw student achievement loss in spite of our best efforts to not have that happen. There still was a significant learning loss. So I think one of the big achievements of the past four years, it's sort of like a crescendo. You know, we, we came, came out of it quietly a little bit, but increasingly more and more and more um, seeing the results that we're looking for in terms of attendance improvement. And our schools have been diligent about squarely focusing on that. To say, no, we're not going to allow poor attendance. Poor attendance means poor learning. And so our schools are being very successful in getting the attendance rate brought back up. We're also seeing the student achievement um, in almost all areas for almost all subgroups. We're back to at least pre-pandemic levels, if not better than. And so we're, we're seeing a trajectory there that's very positive. And it's taken a while, you know, but we're getting there. And so I think that's a real, a real success. Um, I continue to really treasure the strategic plan and the process of the strategic plan. Um, I'm a little nerdy about organizational things like that. And I think that having a, having a good plan that says, where are we going? How are we going to get there? Who's in charge of what? How will we measure if we got there? And how will we report out on our results? That's the, the bare bones of a strategic plan. And really back to the John Burgard days, when he first started us on a strategic planning uh, process. It's taken many, it's had many iterations, but nonetheless, they've all been um, true guides for the work of the district. They're not a shelf document. Um, i- if you look at the, any of the strategic plans along the way, look at our current one. It is the essential work that we're prioritizing for improvements. Um, I'm a big continuous improvement person. So to me, a strategic plan is a key guide to that. Do we know where we're trying to get to? And do we know how we're going to get there? And how will we know if we got there?
How often do you update?
Well, the plan itself is um, the, the priorities of the plan, the targets for improvement are updated every year. The reporting out happens to the board and to the community quarterly. So that um, there's a constant reporting of where are we making the progress? Where are we slower than we hope to be? Where are we doing it better or faster than we hope to, to do? All of that happens on a quarterly basis. So the board always knows where are we in the process of each of those improvement targets? So it's uh, it's good work. It's, it's a guiding document. As I said, it's not a shelf, pretty thing on the shelf. I don't, I hope it's on nobody's shelf. I hope it's on their, you know, right at the, the front of their computer. So. Anyway, that, that's another big deal for me because I, I like to be planful about how are we going to keep getting better and better. Um, the other thing I think that's been a hallmark of certainly the last four years has been our fiscal responsibility. And I believe we've been fiscally very transparent. There have been painful things about the fiscal um, situation for public education, certainly in Dubuque, but throughout Iowa. And so for us to be transparent about that seems to me the minimum that our electorate and our voters ought to have. Where are we? Where is it working? Where is it not? Nobody wants to close schools. That's a icky, painful, dreadful thing to feel you have to do. And yet it comes down to, I think of three things that when budget cuts happen, it is people, programs, or facilities. If you look at the big, the big chunks of, of funding. And for us, we've maintained a square priority on people and programs. So that means the residual option is facilities. And we have many of our, I mean, in losing Fulton, we were sad. Everybody was sad about that. In losing Hoover now, um, again, a, a deep sadness about that. People, aren't we fortunate to live in a community where people bond with their schools? They care enough about education to work with us, be partners in their kids' education. And so they form strong connections with their schools. So to take a school offline is a, it's all bad, except that it causes efficiencies, budget reductions, and efficiencies that are critical to this time. So I think that that in no means here, I'm not certainly celebrating any closures, nor will we celebrate the closure of Jefferson. But in that, millions and millions of dollars every year are saved. We have class sizes because we've, we've brought so many efficiencies through our facility management. Um, we have, we have class sizes that are really remarkable. If you laid out Dubuque Schools class sizes, excuse me, against any of the urban education districts, the larger districts in Iowa, um, class sizes where financial stress is so great. We are far and away the frontrunner of maintaining wonderful class sizes because we think it's that important to learning and to teaching. So I think, again, as painful as some of the budget responsibility things have been that we've had to do, we nonetheless have retained our staff, we've retained our programs, and we've retained our class sizes at excellent levels.
So does that mean that, that comparison to the other larger districts that we have a smaller teacher to, to student ratio than, than others?
Very much so. Our average class sizes are twenty-three to twenty-five students per class.
Okay, so when you have more schools, it would seem like they'd be more spread out. So explain how that, how closing facilities leads to that? Because of the financial savings and the ability to have more teachers or how does?
We, we don't spend the money on facility maintenance and utilities. Instead, we spend it on teachers and classroom supports and class sizes. So our twenty-three to twenty-five average is many of our urban counterparts have thirty-two to thirty-five students in a class. We have twenty-three to twenty-five. That's a very different learning environment. And we believe it's important enough to sacrifice some facility things. So we, in closing schools, we, we save millions. It just Hoover is a million a year because we have saved on those um, those um, facility expenses that no, will no longer exist this year. There's an anomaly there because of the Irving, some of the Irving kids using the building this year.
Mm-hmm. Well, as you, as you look ahead to, and we can go back to, to other things maybe from the, from the past years if, if you wish. Uh, but just to, to think a little bit about that, um, a- as you know, the conversation about closing Jefferson. Why do you think it's, it's so hard when we have that evidence of what happened when we closed Fulton? And what happened when, when Hoover was closed? Why is it so hard for people to understand the, you know, or, or maybe be a bit skeptical about what closing Jefferson might mean for the district? Because we're certainly hearing that. I'm sure you hear some of that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think for this to be a second school that is taken from the North End area is a double whammy of sorts. Enrollment is dropping substantially in the last three years. I think three years, possibly four years, thirty percent of the kids who wanted, the number of kids who attended Jefferson are not there anymore. It isn't tho- those actual students. But the number of students served by Jefferson now is down to three hundred and seventy-five. Well, Roosevelt is about twelve hundred. Um, Washington is, I think, six eleven, the last I checked. And so for Jefferson, a, a huge facility that it is, to be only um, needing to educate three hundred and seventy-five students is a huge cost that can be handled much more efficiently with a combination. And aren't we fortunate to live in a community where people care about losing their neighborhood school? I mean, it i- it is a big deal and nobody takes it lightly. It's a, a punch to a neighborhood, to an area, to lose a school. And all of that history that it's had in that part of the community.
Mm-hmm. Well, I guess that kind of leads us into the, the bond. Um, can you talk a little bit about uh, the last attempt? Uh, and, and kind of what things have, how the dynamics have changed between that approach and this one?
Sure. The dynamics, Amy, of the nature of the bond itself, do you mean, or the communities?
I guess a little both, both. I mean, it's, it's a much different ask. Um, and you've obviously addressed several of the things that were on the table, uh, you know, two years ago. Um, why, why this, uh, I guess the bigger change, um, less money, all of those things? Um, i- is, is this the one that gets it done? And I guess what's it look like from your perspective?
Yeah, we hope it's the one that gets it done because the financial efficiencies of making this move are huge. And we need that so that we're not having to affect other things. Um, the um, when we, when we went to the bond with the community before, it was, excuse me, it was a hundred fifty million dollar ask. And it was for multiple projects. And it was with a budget neutral um, declaration to the community. When the district did its uh, post-mortem on it, and we, we only lost that vote by, I think it was fifty-seven votes, which is just crazy to be that close to, to getting it done. Yeah. So, but the, the, the district did a very substantial post-mortem on it. We said, okay, what happened here? What was it the community didn't support about this? And we heard three things. One was the size of the ask, hundred fifty million, too much. The second was too many projects included in the ask. You know, there were um, in addition to the middle school um, consolidation, we were also asking to do uh, some of the um, facility projects in other places that now are being done with save dollars and Pebble funds. We also were asking for softball and baseball complex improvement, which we need, but we've taken that off. We've taken off the purchase of um, looking for purchasing properties somewhere in this southwest arterial area, knowing that we, we're absent a school presence in that area, which affects sometimes how people in that Piasta area make choices about where their kids will go. So we dropped off those other things, added save dollars. The district is putting up fifty-two million in save dollars, the one cent tax levy, so that the ask of the community is seventy million. Nothing, no projects included, except for uh, the middle school consolidation, rebuilding the Washington school and bringing Jefferson over. The other thing that we heard in debriefing what happened last time was people didn't understand the tax neutral explanation that we gave. And, and it's hard to explain educational financing to people who aren't working with it all the time. And so in spite of our best attempts to do that, community said, we don't understand it. We don't even really probably think that that's accurate because that can't be. So now, it's, the tax levy has gone way down since then. As enrollment declines, the levy goes down. Um, so it's at the lowest point it's been in years and years and years. So while this will cost the community some additional dollars from where we are with the tax levy now, it will still bring us up to a level that's lower when we were asked, than it was when we were asking for the larger amount. And again, that's kind of hard to explain because it's the, the complications of, of educational finance in any state, including Iowa, is complex. And there are lots of different buckets, we call them buckets, that, of money that, that we work with. And um, so this time it's a very different thing. We hope that the community will see a lower ask, a um, a singular focus on consolidating from three to two middle schools. And a way to calculate what the cost for them will be, that's pretty straight up. There's a calculator um, on the district website. All you have to do is put in your assessed value of your home, and it'll tell you exactly what the tax consequence will be. So hopefully all of that is enough of a shift from narrowly missing the mark last time to now having the community say, okay, we're, we're going to get around this. And uh, we'll, we'll soon know. Right now, we're at the whole stage. We're optimistic.
Can you talk a bit about um, what, what that bond issue, what that change at the middle school level? Uh, a, a new middle school would mean for kids? I mean, a- at the heart of this, nobody, nobody wants to say, oh, I don't, I don't care about what happens to kids. They want to say, worried about this money. Do we need to spend this? What about traffic? What about this? Talk a little bit about what, what kind of a learning experience uh, difference that would make for, for our students?
That's a great question. And I'm not sure we've articulated that as much as we still need to. Um, if you look at our two current middle schools, which we know are over, slightly over a hundred years old each. They were built for a, a kind of education that isn't the way we do teaching and learning today. And so with our newer school buildings, whether it's Roosevelt or Prescott or um, Carver, any of the newer ones are equipped for the kind of learning, the collaborative kind of learning that takes place now, kind of group work, the kind of technology and um, other um, technical ways that teaching and learning happen. Um, they're equipped for that. They're, i- it, it's just there and it just happens naturally. So certainly the learning environment will be affected by that. Um, some would say we should be remodeling Washington. Well, to remodel Washington, you're still going to have small physical sizes of classrooms. They're very small. Excuse me. And you're also going to have small gymnasium, a small auditorium, a small lunchroom. Everything is not geared for how things happen today in um, highest quality teaching and learning. So our teachers and our, our support staff and our administrators do a phenomenal job of trying to um, mitigate those limitations at Washington and in Jefferson. But it's not easily accomplished. And in some ways, it, it can't always be accomplished. So we believe that a, a, a new facility will give our learners a chance to have equal opportunities across the middle schools. So that their teaching and learning is enhanced by the nature and the quality of the learning environment. We're also going to be doing a uh, middle school review. I just talked with Mark Burns, our Director of Secondary Education. And Mark's um, going to reopen the whole, how do we teach middle school kids? Here's an opportunity to come back to that basic concept of what best ought teaching and learning look like um, at the middle school level for today's middle school kids. It was several decades ago when we made substantial changes in the um, way teaching and learning happened at our middle schools. We went from junior highs to middle schools, created the house concept. Um, some of, that's all going to be reviewed again. I don't expect to lose the house concept because it takes a larger school and breaks it into smaller units of, of kids. Um, but we're going to look at teaching and learning strategies and say, what ought we to be doing with today's middle school kids? And that should also guide the development of that new middle school, should the community support that in the, in the election.
So Nancy, there's clearly a um, vote no movement out there.
Right.
And so um, if this doesn't pass, as a school board member, what's next?
Well, I said a bit ago that there are basically three areas that if budget shortfall causes a need for significant reductions, they are people, programs, and facilities. If our facility attempt fails, that leaves us no choice but to go back to the other two. People, staff, and programs, learning opportunities. Nobody wants to go there, but uh, an exhaustive community survey was conducted um, after the last um, bond referendum vote. And said, if this, in going forward, if this were to not be successful, here are some things that we would have to consider to make up for budget inadequacies. So some of those, um, close more schools, um, move eighth graders to the high schools. Um, there's a consideration even, one of the things surveyed was, what if we went to one high school? That's a huge budget reduction to run one high school, not two high schools. So those, that's just a sampling of some of the things. We, it would probably affect class sizes. We would probably end up like our counterparts in other areas where they have, I'm very sorry about this horseness. In other, in other areas where we, as I mentioned before, we see the larger class sizes coming into play, which means you reduce the number of teachers and other staff members. So does that answer your question, Mike, in terms of?
Thank you, Nancy.
Next, sure.
Sure. Any other questions about the bond or move on to other topics?
I don't think so. I, I think one of the things in your opening question, Amy, where you asked about successes, one of the things that I think is a hallmark of the last four years has been the increase in school-to-work programming. And Elizabeth mentioned it in her article after we had, we had visited. Um, it's a big deal to have make and, make, made some of the steps that have been made in the Dubuque County School District to bring kids more squarely into the world of work. Um, when it comes to job shadowing and career pathways, meaning a sequence of classes that take a student into or towards uh, certification in a, in a trades area, for example. We've developed many more partnerships with businesses and industries and local agencies who are involved in school-to-work kinds of programming. Because that gives our students opportunities, many of those opportunities, take them out of the classroom, put them into businesses and industries for internships and job shadowing and those kinds of things. And so that's been a huge development. We saw the, the remake of our graduation requirements. And in order to have more opportunity for some of the school-to-work classes that are there available now, we took away a smidge of some of the other courses that were required before. And I think that's good and bad, but it was the only way we could facilitate getting kids more opportunities to prepare to, for the world of, when they leave high school. So I just want to mention that as a, as a way of looking back on the last four years. It's happened broadly and it's happened extensively in that short amount of time.
Well, one thing I would ask about the last couple of years in particular, um, changes at the state level. And I guess setting aside the financial piece for right now, but just looking uh, more to hear your response to how the district uh, had to react to some of the more, the social changes. Uh, the thing about, about uh, legislation having to do with the books we have in our libraries, uh, the, the, what we can call, what nicknames we can use for kids. Um, a- a- and other things that, that did impact students and learning and the board had to navigate. How do you feel you dealt with those? Could something have been handled differently? Uh, have you seen much in the way of impacts?
Yep, it has. Um, you know, recently, our city council addressed the gender identity removal as one of the protected classes. And it was interesting to watch them make the change and then call an emergency meeting and come back and undo that. So we had already dealt with that about a month earlier. The difference is, it was recommended for city governments, it's required for school districts. And so that to me was very painful. When I, when I entered education, lo these many years ago, and spent my adult life as an educator, and now eight years as a school board member, I never dreamed we would be saying, we will, we will include and we will protect and we will advocate for these kids, but not those kids. Why on earth would we do that? When we say we educate all kids, we educate all kids. We advocate for all kids. We support and uphold and work with all kids. And yet, in removing gender identity, as, as an example, Amy, of what you're saying there, that was one, that's a recent one that really hit home for me. We know gender identity is, I'm sorry, code for trans kids. Well, trans kids are already struggling enough themselves in and of their situation. Do we need to make anything more complicated for them that we could avoid? No. And so that one was a particularly painful one for me. And as a result of the board's conversation, nobody, nobody wanted to do that. But we were required to, or we would lose two point four million in Title I funding, remedial reading funding. That's a big deal. So we complied. But we passed a board resolution that said, basically, for us in practice, all means all. When we, when we say that we're going to tend to advocate for, support, educate to the best of our ability, all kids really means all kids. And so the board resolution was our way of countering it, which goes back to your question, Amy. How did the board respond to it? I think we responded to that as well as we could. And it was with um, review by our, our legal folks who came up with the idea of passing the resolution that would give us a way to make that public statement, give the assurance to our students, our families, our staff members, our volunteers. You mentioned many of the other ones, books. Well, we could have just taken their list of books and said, okay, we'll pull these required books uh, from our libraries, which we did. But we also set up committee, a large committee of teachers from all levels and parents and community members who reviewed all the books in our libraries. And so, yes, we met the letter of the law, but we also met the intent of it. Now, do I like taking things out of libraries and restricting the scope of things that our kids have available to them? No, but that was required of us. And so we met the requirement, but we did it with major, major input from staff members and, and um, community members and parents um, helping us to make those decisions. And what we're seeing in all of And what we're seeing in all of this, the examples you gave, the, the, well, all of those equity areas, what we're seeing is a loss of local control. So the board is given two roles by law. Select, hire, implement, evaluate, and fire if necessary the superintendent. And secondly, make policy. I would say there's a third one that isn't required by law, but it should be expected of every school board member, and that's advocacy. Public education is being, I'll say attacked, at the very least assaulted. And one of the things that's in that arena is the loss of local control. More and more, we're being told what we may or may not do. Now, if you're a teacher of certain subjects, you're sort of on pins and needles to make sure that you're meeting the rigors of the restrictions that have been placed on the curriculum of our classrooms and our teachers' teaching of them. And yet, to give integrity and accuracy to the content of those subject areas, that's a tight spot to be in. That doesn't help us recruit teachers to Iowa to have those kinds of restrictions underfoot. So the, the, the actual local interference of local control is ever more creeping in to the operation of our school districts. It's a tragic thing, in my opinion.
Do you, as a result of some of that, hear more from parents or people in the community regarding the things that, that we all hear and see on social media that they're teaching critical race theory, or, you know, we, we, there are parts of our history we shouldn't be focused on, you know, particularly around, around race and, and some of those issues? Is, is that something that's, that's come home to roost where maybe you hear more about it or not necessarily?
I do not hear more about it, other than in passing conversations where people who are kind of like-minded with me about that and rail at the notion of many of those things, share the ain't it awful conversations, you know, in passing. The people who have the conversations about it are the ones in the schools. So teachers I know get conversations with parents about it. Principals do, they're the on the line folks who are dealing more with the day to day, what we do and what we don't. In all of it, we, we are following the letter of the law, but we are also looking for every way we can to teach accuracy and comprehensive curriculum, whether it's social studies or literature or whatever it might be, that doesn't water down or denigrate or modify the accuracy of what ought to be part of those curricula. It's a, it's a, it's like dancing on a, on a rope, you know? I guess I would be walking. But the, the, the situation is that it's a, it's a, I'll say a nervous time to be in a classroom and particularly in some areas where those things are so under scrutiny. Our community gets it. They understand it is not, it is not the school district imposing those things, that's coming from state and national forces that are imposing it. So when you add the, the continued inadequate funding of public schools in our state, I just looked up again to make sure I was correct about it. Iowa has dropped to 29th in the nation in funding, state funding to public education. 29th, the lower half of the states in the, in the United States. That's a pretty serious situation, and that's 12 years running. We have been below or substantially below new money from year to year coming in that even, we've been remotely meets the cost of living increases.
Nancy, what's your, what's your source for that stat?
The Council of Chief State School Officers is the latest one that I looked at. I had looked at NEAs and theirs basically said the same thing. And, but the Council of Chief State School Officers is a really good source for accurate information about those things.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Just following up a little bit more about the role of a school board member, Nancy, when you talk about, you know, hiring and, and monitoring the superintendent and then making policy, you added advocacy. You know, when you, we talked at the beginning, when you made your introduction, you talked a little about test scores rebounding since the pandemic and attendance rebounding in most areas, but not all. I guess, question would be is, where are we not rebounding as much as we would like? What, if any, role does the school board have in that from a policy standpoint?
Our, our strongest rebound has been in the language arts areas. Our lesser rebound, though only slightly lesser, has been in mathematics. And so we're having lots of conversations that's really less of a policy issue than it is an operations issue. So that falls more with the superintendent and her team. We get the results, the report of results and how we're doing with it. We're very encouraged with the latest ISAS scores that have come in to see that continued growth happening, that the trajectory is upward and we're just delighted with that. And so when I speak of mathematics being not as strong a rebound, it's only minorly less of a rebound, so I don't want to wrongly quantify that. But we need to pay attention to that and, and we are. Does that answer your question, Matt?
It does, thank you.
Other questions for Nancy or? I, I guess the other thing I, I would ask about, I guess, over the course of a, a long tenure in education, such as you've had, certainly seen changes on the number of kids dealing with mental health issues and perhaps kind of the, the significant impact that, that brain health has had on our schools. And the schools have stepped up to, to make changes and, and to bring about programming and find solutions there. Is it enough? Are there areas where you think schools need to do more?
I don't think it can ever be enough, but I think we have both a district response that's commendable, but also I want to credit the community. You know, we look at people like Debbie Butler, who has stepped up with funding of the brain health rooms and some of the community foundation and some of the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools. Those folks are taking community funds and community opportunities and adding them to what we're doing in the district. We have a new program going on this year that I'm particularly excited about. It's called Teach to Heal, and it's a district-wide program for all teachers, all support staff, including bus drivers and food service and everybody, buildings and grounds. And it's focusing on how do we build relationships with, with students that will even foster stronger network, a, a stronger net, safety net with kids for the kinds of brain health challenges that they're dealing with. And I'm hearing from several teachers that it's making already a huge difference. And we're only, what, not a month and a half into the new programming. So lots of professional learning going on with that, lots of opportunities for us to continue, us meaning our staff, to continue to learn, how can we support kids and their brain health needs? But I would also add, we need to, we are doing things to affect the brain health of our staff as well. Everybody's under pressure, everybody's feeling the weight of things in their lives, whether it's national or it's state or it's personal, where brain health has become a challenge, I think, for, I'll say, all people, but certainly for all categories of people. So not just students is my point. We have staff and volunteers who need our support as well. And so we're really stepping into that in the, the, if you talk with somebody who's in a classroom with kids, ask them about Teach to Heal and what they're doing and how they're seeing the results. It's making a difference and I, I'm optimistic about it. So I only cite that, Amy, as an additional thing that's been added this year, but it's a, a major thing in that it's all people, all personnel are being trained in it so that as kids get on the school bus or they go to the lunchroom or they are in the classroom, they have people who are additionally trained in how to have good relationships and build connections with kids that are positive and supportive and nurturing and helpful.
So Nancy, with eight years of service to the school board, thinking back over that time, is there a particular vote that you took that you kind of wish maybe you had the chance to re-vote on that issue and any regrets, things you might have done differently?
Gosh, that's a hard question. Hmm. I tend to, I tend to speak my mind, so if some things doesn't seem quite, quite right, I am the, I ask lots of questions and I push back on things. When I first, when I first ran for the school board eight years ago, I remember this very conversation with the editorial board where the question was, you're so recently out of the employment of the district, will you really challenge the district in ways that you ought to as a school board member? And inside of me, I thought, you don't know me if you're asking that question very seriously. I'm, I'm a, what do you mean we're doing or why aren't we doing kind of person or what if we did? So I'm looking back, Mike, for a conversation. The gender identity one was really hard for me of, of recent, to say that we were forced to take that out and we had to vote to take it out of all of our policies. But other than that, my very first, my very first vote as a new school board member eight years ago still haunts me, not, not in how I voted. I think I voted the right way, but then I always think I voted the right way. It was about the renewing the charter for Prescott as a charter school. And it lost the board's vote by one vote. I had been a part of helping Prescott in my job with the district, helping Prescott to develop its charter school. I served on the advisory committee for the charter school. And I knew the incredible things that were happening because of the expeditionary learning model that they were implementing in the arts infusion. And yet, the board at that time looked only at student achievement gains. And there had been no losses, but there had not been the gains the board must have been looking for at the time. This is my very first meeting of the board, and it still haunts me because we lost that charter school and with it, we lost the funding for the expeditionary learning model that was, had been implemented there. And I believe that that was a wrong, a wrong decision. But, so would I vote differently? No, not at all. I voted to continue it. But I wish I would have had more experience as a board member at that point because I would have, I think, been much more vocal about trying to help people see the, the things that weren't being measured that were gains from the charter school.
Thank you.
Nancy, my question, I'm curious about, what kind of things do you do as, as a board member to make sure you're out and about in the community, that you're hearing from a good cross-section of people, to really get a pulse on kind of the community and what they think of the school district and what they think they could do better? You know, what ways do you, do you stay connected to, 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 to the folks in the community?
That's a great question, Alan. I'm a pretty gregarious person, so for me, being out means meeting and greeting people and talking with people. So that just, that's just who I am. In addition, I'm involved with lots of different groups and activities. But I have to say, probably the busiest conversation place for me is grocery store. Oddly enough, it is, you know, I attend the, the community events and try to be visible and interactive with people and keep my finger on the pulse of what's happening. There's something about the grocery store environment, apparently. I've come to understand, I need to leave additional time if I'm going to go to the grocery store for conversations, and that's good.
Is there a particular part of the store, produce?
Produce, yeah, it's all about the produce. Maybe it's the refrigeration factor, I don't, I don't know. But I think that's our job. Our job is to be out, is to be in conversation, to be getting the pulse on what's happening. And I'm dogged about responding if, if somebody sends an email. People very often send an email to Amy and the board. And so it beams out to everybody and you don't know who's responded or who hasn't. I'm compulsive about getting back to people, same with phone calls, because I think at the very least, we need to be there as a listening voice and as a response. Much of what comes to us in those ways aren't board items. But, okay, then let's help that person be connected to the, the person or the place where that ought to be addressed. Then, again, my doggedness is I contact that person again to say, did you? Did you get back to Mr. So-and-so? And so, you know, it's a combination. It's, it's being out and about. Farmer's market is another good conversation place to, you know, where people feel they can just bring up issues and concerns that they have. It's good, we need to be out and about, that's our job. Did that answer your question, Alan?
Anything else that we haven't touched on that, that you'd like to bring to our attention, Nancy, as we wrap up here?
Good question. Let me check here. I, I guess just that, what makes me different as a school board member? I, you know, 47 years is a long time to be in any job, and I was in several jobs in the district, but all of those were in the Dubuque County School District. I was out three years of education and whatnot, but, but I had many jobs. I was a teacher, I was a reading clinician, I was a director of professional learning and school improvement and elementary principal and director of elementary education. Each of those is taking that same world, but tilting it slightly so you, you get a different vantage point. And I think that's given me an interesting perspective on education. Then add school board to it, you know, and that's yet a very different perspective on the world of education. And so I think my training, my knowledge, my experience, my dedication to kids, my whole adult life has been working with and for kids and trying to help provide the highest quality of education possible for each and every kid. So I think it makes me kind of a uniquely qualified person to continue on the board. And for me, it's an opportunity to keep serving kids. So I enjoy the work. I'm also in the Keystone Area Education Agency Board of Directors, which is yet a different perspective. And if you want to see legislative impact on something, take a look at what happened to our AEA system. That's been a, a very sad thing. And yet, good things are being provided through the AEAs and it is with lots of people working really hard to remake the system. I think it's providing the finest quality that could possibly be done, given the restrictions that have been put on it and the loss of funding. So. So, still proud of what's happening with the AEAs, but it's a, it was a major hit. So, again, back to that point of view is kind of a different one. And so, I think as a candidate, I, I've been at it a long time. You know, you can look at me and say, "Ah, you're too old," and some will, some have. But I think what I bring is a level of experience and a level of expertise that hopefully is helpful to the process, that's my intent.
Okay. Well, Nancy, we appreciate your time, appreciate your years of service to Dubuque County Schools, and wish you luck as the campaign goes on. Thanks for being here today.
Thanks to each of you for the opportunity, it's really, you've made it very easy. I don't usually talk quite this much, but it is a, it's a privilege to have this time with you, so thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.